The meeting to order, the work session will now come to order on October 21st, 2025 at 5:30 PM. And I will call the role. Mayor Protem Elder.
Here.
Councilmember Alfonso.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Protem Richardson.
Here.
I am here. Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Gunderson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Alright, so we have four items on the work session. Over- overview of the Texas Tree Trail, Recreation Center and Senior Center update, discussion of the water tower logos, and if there's anything on the agenda tonight to discuss. So, let's get it moving. You gotta go.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Capito, Director of Parks and Recreation and-
Joe Flynn, Bifacation Supervisor.
And this evening, we will be providing you with an overview of the Texas Tree Trail project. To begin with, the tree board was originally established in December of 1998. It was reestablished with new members and responsibilities in November of 2024. This board is an advisory board to the city council, and is made up of one member from the city council, which is Deputy Mayor Protem Scotty Richardson, one member from our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, which is John Hillibrand, one city resident, Tom Moore, who's in attendance tonight, and also our city arborist, who that spot is vacant right now. The city council gave the tree board some projects and initiatives to move forward with, and they, these were to establish tree installation and maintenance standards, as well as to develop the Parkway Tree Grant Program. The criteria behind that and the grant amounts associated with this tree grant program. They also were charged to evaluate where the city should be adding trees within city parks, as well as to prioritize the areas of these new tree plantings. So, the tree, the tree board has recommended to plant trees in a variety of locations throughout our park system, and we're doing that currently. And then, as discussions continued, it was recommended to concentrate in the, on the open space behind the senior center, and this was the beginning of the Tree Trail project. Okay, so this is the senior center open space, an aerial view. It is nine acres of open space, a half mile of multi-use trail that meanders through the property. It does have a World War II memorial at the southern aspect of the trail system. It has a practice backstop and a satellite tower on the, on the property as well. To the north, there's OC Taylor Elementary School, and to the northeast, it's Fire Station Two, just to give you some landmarks. So, prior to the recreation center and the property is associated with the recreation center, this was the last parcel of parkland to develop for the city. So, it was very important for the city and the department to really concentrate and carefully plan out the amenities that need to be implemented at this location. But, the one thing that was constant were trees. As you can see, there, the border, the fence line has trees, but besides that, it doesn't have any shade throughout the open space. So, when discussion ensued with the park board, you know, plantings of trees throughout this park was definitely a must for the park, for the tree board. So, they did move forward and asked Joe to come up with a plan for this location. And I will turn it over to Joe to go through this plan.
Hello, everyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, what we wanted to do here is design a Texas Tree Trail behind the senior center, and as I was, as we were designing it, I wanted to create something that no other city had. We didn't want to go with, you know, a tree trail. We didn't, we looked at it more like a tree museum or a tree-themed park. And we wanted to go with, have it kind of be an experience, an educational experience for our citizens, but still have a park-like atmosphere to it. But, what I'll do is I'll just kind of go over some particulars. Just to kind of give you an idea, based on the overall design, this design, there's over 200 trees on this design that we're gonna install over a period of time. There's over 40 different varieties of trees. There's over, you know, 20 different types of blooming trees. So, it, it's gonna be a kind of a lot going on, but it's laid out to where it's not gonna be confusing and it's gonna look, look good for years to come. I'll just kind of take you on a quick tour here, but one thing I wanted to emphasize is that we're gonna have trees in here, like I said, like a tree museum, that I just didn't want to go with your basic oak trees and your basic, you know, just your everyday trees. We're gonna have trees in here that really a lot of people don't, don't really have in this area. Just kind of like Mexican Buckeye, Golden Rain Tree, different types of Dogwoods, Redbuds, Sauser Magnolias, gonna bring in some. I know I'm just naming off names, but I just want you to know this. It's, it's really gonna be a lot of different varieties of trees and, and different textures. But, what I wanted to do is start off to where you come in here, this is right behind the Recreation Center here, is I don't know how many of you lived in, how long you all lived in Texas, but have you ever heard of the Big Thicket, the Piney Woods of East Texas? Well, when you start off, I really wanted to kind of go with something that'll really knock your socks off. And what we're gonna do is kind of go with the Piney Woods of Texas theme here. And you can see these little green guys here are gonna be pine trees. This is where the memorial is. Any existing memorials or trees, we will work around. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna remove anything except for, you know, trash trees and things of that nature. But, the neat thing about it is, over time, with these trees, these pine trees, as they mature, that'll enable us to go with what's called understory trees, things like Dogwoods, Redbuds, things of that nature. And kind of as you go, like you'll start off right here with the oak tree section. And as you go, you walk, we'll have different kinds of oak trees, live oaks, Schumard Red Oaks, Pin Oaks, things like that. And I just kind of threw some names out here, but you'll, you know, we can work in pathways, like here, right here, I put in what's called like Oak Tree Alley. You can kind of walk, meander off the beaten path here, and, you know, you're kind of walk through a hallway of oak trees, have some sitting areas, a rock pathway. You know, that'll kind of be, kind of the theme throughout the park. As you walk up here, you'll come into the Maple Tree Section. This area right here will be like Crate Myrtle Way. I just, like I said, threw some names out there. I have all kinds of, different kinds of Crate Myrtles and things like that, different colors. As you come up here, Elm Tree Pass, you walk through all the different kinds of elm, elm trees. And then, as you come here, you'll kind of come into our blooming trees, things like different kinds of Redbuds, Desert Willows, more Crate Myrtles, things of that nature. And you'll come through here, there'll be like the Magnolia Section. Come through here, there'll be like the Chinese Pistachios, Cypresses, things like that. And we didn't want to go with, just like I said, just one tree. You'll have like six or eight, six or eight live oaks, six or eight red oaks. So, as you're walking, the eye picks up a new, new variety of tree as you're-
As you're walking.
That makes any sense. But, the possibilities are endless. What we did here is we worked in these open areas here. If you want to home in on that area there. These areas right here will be kind of just random trees, so people can picnic or kind of enjoy the park. And like I said, at least if you want to go up to the next one. Yeah, as you come up, and like I said, the Crate Myrtles and things, but the possibilities are endless. Like I said, we can kind of work in all kinds of pathways. I just kind of put this in, like, you know, possibly a future patio with a sitting wall, a pergola surrounded by trees, where you can have lunch or hang out with the family or whatever. Later on, you know, we could work in things like native grass areas. As far as the Crate Myrtle area here, we could eventually bed this in and work in all, dog, different types of dwarf Crate Myrtles, native Crate Myrtles, things like that, that you just don't really see in everything, so. And you can, I almost kind of looked at it like our own little Botanic Garden, in a way, in the, in the future. You know, we could, we could design it to where it, it always flows, it doesn't look messy, you know, if it's done right, which it will be. And just a lot of textures and stuff in there you just haven't seen before. No other city has anything quite like this. But, that's basically the gist of it. Any questions or anything?
So, you'll be water sprinkling this too?
Yeah, there's two different sources of, we have up here where the fire station is. We can tap into the irrigation up here, and then down behind the rec center, we can tap into irrigation down there. I have specs on all the trees on, they'll, they'll all be planted with compost, mulch beds, bubblers, irrigation bubblers, and staking kits. So, yeah, the first thing we'll do, that's kind of phase one, is along with getting some of the foundation trees in, is getting proper irrigation.
And removing that rough brush and stuff like that.
Yeah, we'll get all the rough brush out and-
That's actually being scheduled to get removed within the next few weeks.
So, the, the trees we're putting in, are we deciding to put in, so I know it's gonna cost a little more, more mature trees, bigger trees? To start off, are we-
Yeah, to start off with kind of phase one, we'll put in, as far as like the oak trees, the elm trees, things like that, we'll go with at least four, four and a half to five inch trees to let them start to get mature. The good news is, is the things like the Vitak, the, the blooming trees, we can get those in, and 45 to 65 down, because they grow twice as fast as, as all the other trees.
So, yeah, because, and we want to, if we're gonna decide to do this, we want to do it fast, because trees will be dormant and ready to start rolling.
Right.
To be planted, so.
Yeah, it'll, it'll take, it's a big area and it's a lot of trees, and it'll, it's gonna take some time to mature everything.
Joe, you can work overtime for us, right? You've already done this, there you go. No, I'm just kidding.
No, I'm ready to go. No, I'll personally, as we do it in phases, I'll personally, you know, make, supervise the layout of all the trees. And like I said, the biggest mistake when people plant trees is they don't think six, eight, 10 years down the road, and how they're gonna look. The neat thing about it is, over time, it'll be, it'll be canopied over, but it won't be growing into each other. But, I'm real excited about it, because just looking at it, you're just seeing colors. But, if you can kind of get a feel of while you're walking through there, like I said, the different kind of, like for instance, right here, it'll be E's Necklace. You know, it's, it's a tree that's really gonna bloom and, and a lot of color and everything. But, I'm real excited about the Piney Woods of Texas, because of the understory trees and, you know, the pathway going through there, different types of Dogwoods and what's called Forest Panzy Redbud, which is a red bud you don't see a lot. It grows under other trees and it's got a purple leaf on it. It's really, really beautiful.
So, you, you were talking about some different kinds of trees that you don't see a lot, but are all these trees, they do well in Texas?
Yeah, all these trees are on the Texas A&amp;M list, but Texas is a big place, so these trees are for our zone. And honestly, out of 35 years of doing this, I've planted all these trees and have been through trial and error, have had good, have had good success.
That's awesome. It's really beautiful.
You know, a lot of trees, you know, there's a lot of trees on the list, but they won't grow in, in this area and in the soil. Yes, ma'am, that, these trees will do well, do well in our zone, but yet, when people walk through there, I want them to walk out here going, wow, I didn't know there were so many types of oak trees. I didn't know there were so many types of elm trees and, and everything. And plus, it'll be, like I said, a tree museum, but it's also a tree scape. It's gonna make sense. It's gonna have a nice way out, you know, for years to come. I'm, I'm, you know, like the little, the sitting areas you can work in and things like that.
So, also discussing with the tree board, with the open space, there's areas for like pollinator gardens, butterfly gardens and things of that nature, so you could do a lot of different aspects and, you know, just let Joe go crazy with that, with this thing.
Yeah, this is a key play compared to what we can-
We love it when Joe goes crazy.
But, again, I mean, just what Lisa said, like, there's plenty of room in here for, it's like the Botanic Gardens. They, they opened that up in the 30s and they're, they're still going on yet, so the possibilities are endless. I've got so much up here already for what I want to do.
And I imagine you've kind of, through the seasons have changed, like, there's not areas that everything's lost their leaves.
No, that's kind of, the way it's, the way it's laid out, is you'll have evergreens, you're deciduous, means they dropped the leaves, then more evergreens, so yeah. It's gonna look a little bare in the winter, but no, there'll, there'll be plenty of evergreens in there.
Is there ever a practice of like hiding in a corner, planting extra trees so that they're the same age? So, you ever have to replace something? So you ever have to replace something? You already have them, like hiding, growing in a corner?
Oh, like a staging area or something like that?
Right.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's such a thing or not.
Yeah.
You, you'd watch when like a section dies because of.
Oh, yeah.
Something and, and, um, you replace it with new trees, so they're, you know, they're.
Yeah, uh, like a staging area or something like that, a little nursery, yeah, absolutely. When we do put these in, uh, it is important that there is a, uh, a, um. A spec, like I said, you know, making sure the holes dug properly, compost, mulch beds. Uh, the bigger trees will have two bubblers at a gallon per minute and the smaller trees will have one bubbler. Um, we're gonna set the zones up to where we can also manual water during maturity, the first two to three years, the rough, for the, the rough times. We can manual water and really keep a close eye on it. So, I mean, I've even got it down to what kind of, uh, fertilizer we're gonna put down the first two years, five years, ten years.
We've also discussed having, um, like an educational aspect of it, so having a QR code or some signage per tree to give, um. You know, we're so close to OC Taylor, so they could come and walk down and get some education on the.
Yeah, as you kinda come into the varieties, we could put little signs in saying.
Schumard.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it'd be a cool idea to have some way, some of our wayfinding signs in there, like, you know, where you could kinda tie in. Kind of parts of the city too, where you could say like, you know, the different alleys and, you know, whatever, you could do that.
And maybe, I don't know, it's kinda fucking crazy, uh, maybe like when it really gets mature and everything, if like the schools come in, we could. Do a tour or something like that.
When you talk about phases, time between phases, what, what's the timetable?
So correct?
And when you do the phase, i- is there gonna be like just one section or are there gonna be spots around the whole property, you know, in phases?
Good question. Um, so right now we have, um, money in our CIP for the installation of irrigation and then our foundation trees. So our more substantial trees that will, will lay out throughout the, the open space.
Throughout the property.
Yes, sir. And then, um, we'll be looking at three to five years, um, to be installing trees, just depending on how much money is allocated in the CIP. Per, per year, but, um, in conversation with Joe, we think we could probably do that whole plan within three years.
What, what do we have in our CIP right now?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Is this something that we could ask citizens to like donate a tree or a section or something like that?
Sure, and we right now have a donation on the water bill, uh, for, um, residents if they wish to donate toward the library or towards other things. And so we could add that. The only one to be careful of is letting a resident buy a tree, cause then they'll wanna pick the tree.
Yeah, we don't wanna.
Yeah, same with benches.
Same with benches.
Maybe bricks, they can buy bricks to pay.
Well, you know, so like only build the library, there was a call for everyone to donate money. And then there's a big huge plaque on the wall with everyone's name, something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, and you get that option, I mean, but even like the library right now, um, hundred, I think it's a hundred and ninety thousand a year comes in just from a community who donates two dollars on the water bill. And so, um, that's an option, we could add a third option on the water bill where, hey, residents wanna donate two dollars, that generates a lot of money too. So that's, those are options like that for sure.
And to answer your question, uh, the way we can do the phases is, uh, if you can connect. Is, um, when we do the phases, we'll kinda spread it out to where we just don't do like one here. We'll spread it out to where when it's done, we'll have some trees here, here, here and here to where it, it looks like we accomplished more. To where it's more balanced and then it's balanced and laid out and then we'll just kinda build.
So, so, uh. I'm just go over thinking, we need a half a million dollars to make this whole thing, get it and get it.
I don't know what's enough.
Okay. Yeah, I was giving us a bre-.
I know the, the word, Joe, I think you told me that, uh, the irrigation we can do ourselves and either planting, we're capable of planting on trees, so that saves a lot of money. So I, I think the cost would be less, but I don't know if we've even looked at that yet.
We have.
Okay.
Yes, we have priced some trees and just getting them in the right time of year and like right now, um, if, if. You all want us to move forward with this, we'll start looking at trees and start installing this, this winter.
Do we need to take this out front because of the amount?
Yes, I think that at some point, the, the show, a full proposal should come to the council. If, if it's going to be something we're gonna bid out, there should be a bid, if it's something that the pieces are less than fifty, we can do it internally. So I don't know, how much was the irrigation? Do you know?
Uh, the first phase of the irrigation was around forty-five hundred, yeah.
Forty-five hundred?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so we can, so is your first phase of the project under fifty thousand?
Yes.
So what you could do if you want, mayor, you could bring it forth as a project to the council and the council just says, we want you to implement this over the next couple of years. And do so within the guidelines of our funding. However, if we go over fifty thousand, uh, for any portion of it, they should come to a public discussion. And so we could, even if it was proposals instead of bids, because of the specialized nature of the material. You know, you want a trees from a reputable nursery of a certain specification.
Well, here's, here's what I'm also thinking of, we have donate, donations and it goes over fifty thousand and we wanna do more. I guess we're gonna have to bring a backage down, then it goes over fifty thousand, or can we go in there and implement and say, hey, look, you know, as donations go in. Use that money or.
Yeah, the donations would be budgeted, so they'd run through the budget process, just like they do now for the library and for, uh, parks and so.
We wouldn't have to wait on it yearly.
Yeah, but you already have in the CIP, you already have money for this, so it's already.
I recognize that, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm doing faster.
I think part of their problem is they've gotta get the irrigation in and they've gotta get the base ready to go and so that may take them some time. But certainly, if with the first round of plants, the first round of trees, you should work up a spec sheet and pricing and determine if you're going to bid it, have someone else install it. You're bidding price for tree and installation, or if you're just buying the tree and bidding the price of the tree and you're gonna install, which is a big task with a lot of trees. And so you can decide which one and then see what that price is. And, but what I would guess is you're probably gonna do is maximize the number of trees, so you're probably gonna be well over the fifty thousand. Because why wouldn't she pursue more trees, of course, if you can put them in early? And so I would just bring that proposal forth to council on a consent agenda and then it's a, an approval. And it can either be a bid or proposal, depending upon the specialty of the trees. Cause you may want specific trees that are only available through specific nurseries and so that's okay. You want a nursery that has the selection you want, so that may limit, that's a specialized argument in that process, we acknowledge that as part of the approval.
How long would that take? To, to have a proposal of what you'd say like a, a very healthy phase one would be?
Do you already have a tree vendor picked out?
Yeah, I've had a couple of them.
Okay, so you could go out and pick some trees.
Yes.
Within the next few weeks, so it wouldn't take us very long.
Okay, okay.
And you're gonna need that time to put the irrigation in anyway.
I think, uh, he's also gotta think about where he's gonna do locations and then add the irrigation as it goes, I would imagine.
Yeah, first thing you can do is, yeah, first thing we'll do is get the foundation of the system in, figure out how many trees we wanna put in and then zone by then.
Yeah, do it.
So we'll do it to where, uh, um, as we add trees, we'll just tap in and have more zones.
Okay, okay, alright, so what do you, you, what do you need from us? Direction that we're gonna?
Just that you like the program and you wanna go forward?
We wanna bring it back forward as soon as we can.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sounds great.
I think it's neat to see the Texas Tree Trail logo there.
Yeah.
I think we found out that no one else has that.
Really?
So.
It's cool, it's cool.
There's one with an S on the end of trails, but that doesn't.
That is not D Trail.
No, no, that's not D Trail.
It's a series of.
Thank you to Deputy Mayor Horton for bringing it up, we've done the organization, we actually had City Attorney Sarah Ross, um, do a little legal research for us and make sure that we weren't going down first.
Good job, Joe.
Thank you, looks good.
Thanks, Javi. Keep making our city look beautiful like you have, you've done a fantastic job, buddy.
Anyway, Mayor Wally is here. All of these beautifications, everything you see, the main street, you know, these, these boulevards, uh, Hall Johnsons. You know, obviously the maintenance on twenty-six, Riverwalk, Glade, all of these improvements. That's all Joe and his team and they do a fantastic job. And when you don't see them on twenty-six, cause they're, they're not always on twenty-six, but they're most obvious on twenty-six. If they're somewhere else in a bed, either installing new or pruning and, uh, you know, weeding and getting.
Give them the old.
Give them a hard positive.
They're in the roundabouts. Yeah.
Uh, is there any other questions or anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Big stuff puts you to work, I promise.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, good evening, uh, mayor and council, I'm Chrissy Crozier, I am the Parks and Recreation Manager for the Parks and Rec Department. Um, and I'm here to give kinda a, an overview, um, spotlight of our department over this last fiscal year. Okay, first off, um, you are, hopefully you're familiar with our two facilities. Um, it's, we have a great team operating over this past year. Um, some of our facilities, our two facilities have become like second homes to people. I, I did, uh, wanna add a quote from, um, uh, Scotty Richardson, our deputy mayor pro temp. Um, we appreciate the, the comment that was made on social media and this was, this is not unusual, we have a lot of wonderful comments from our regular users. So how do we operate? We have a small but mighty team, um, uh, executing our day-to-day operations and I have two individuals here. I would like to introduce and have them come up and tell a little bit about themselves as well as their team in their center. So first off, we have Brittany Strickland, she is our Recreation Center Supervisor at the Rec Center.
Yes, yes, hi, good evening, mayor and council, Brittany Strickland, I am the Recreation Center Supervisor. Um, I oversee the daily operations of the facility and the staff there. So I just kinda wanna highlight and put a face to a name of all of the, the responsibilities of the Recreation Center. That kind of are to go off of Chrissy's stats and numbers that she's gonna give tonight. So a picture next to me is Jessica Thompson, she is our Administrative Assistant, so she's gonna do all of the invoicing for all of our department, Parks and Rec. Jessica is special to us, um, because she also provides so much support as well for us. She works the Recreation Center front desk, she works the Senior Center front desk and she goes on all the trips with the seniors. And she works all of our recreation events, so we are super grateful for her to be so versatile and to provide that for us. Uh, we're gonna skip over the next one, that's Cody and Tori of the Senior Center. The next box is Elijah Davis and Matt Morrison, they are athletic, so everything's sports. Elijah Davis is our Recreation Specialist and his coordinator is Matt Morrison. So they are everything sports, so they are tennis and pickleball classes and leagues, they run our adult basketball program. They run our pickleball and our therapeutic program, um, our very popular homeschool program. And our even more popular youth basketball and our volleyball leagues. So these guys are always knee deep in coaches and scheduling practices, doing schedules for, for games. Um, so they are super busy and stay very well organized with over almost like forty-plus teams per, per youth league, so these guys are great. Um, next up is Ralph Alvarez and Madison Morgan, they are the fun stuff. So they are summer camps, they're holiday camps for the kids, where are recreation events and then youth and adults, um, classes for, for fitness. Um, Ralph is unique to us, he actually, um, designs our recreation brochure in-house. So it's really nice to have that control and that easy turnaround where we're doing it ourselves. And then Madison, um, she kinda bleeds over into the sports, um, uh, team. She is a college, a former college volleyball player, so you will see her out at City Park on Monday nights. She actually referees those games in-house as well, so it's really nice to, to have that, those special people in-house that, that can provide such, such great programs. Um, so those are all of our full-time staff. Um, not pictured is a number of part-time employees, um, that provide the Recreation Center's exceptional support. Great customer service for residents and visitors when they walk into the Recreation Center, so we are, are blessed with such a great team. So that's everybody and that's it for me, I'm gonna turn it over to the Senior Center.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council, uh, my name's Cody Ashton, I'm the Senior Center Supervisor for the city of Colleyville. Pictured up there with me is Tori Gallagher, uh, she's our other full-time staff member at the Senior Center. Uh, she's our Recreation Specialist, uh, I oversee the daily operations at Senior Center along with supervisor Tori. Uh, her main, um, responsibilities at the Senior Center are gonna be doing our programming and scheduling of our activities there. Uh, and as you know, our Senior Center is, uh, there to kinda cater to our fifty and better, uh, community. Uh, so we have our, uh, fitness room, which is popular there and we have three multipurpose rooms and then our community center, or community, uh, room as well. And then, uh, just for our classes, uh, we offer weekly games, uh, Mahjong and Texas Hold'em are pretty popular with us. Uh, we have various fitness classes, uh, special interest groups, uh, we also offer education classes and seminars. Uh, we have art classes, uh, social, special events, uh, such as our Meals on Wheels program is, is very popular. Uh, we also had a National Senior Citizens Day a couple of months ago, which is very popular as well. And then our also, uh, ever-popular day trips, uh, which includes Win Store, uh, which is always full up and, uh, people are eager to go, so. It's kind of a quick wrap-up of, uh, what we offer there at the Senior Center.
That's a long one.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so now I'm gonna delve into some of the facts and figures over this past year. So, um, feel free, if there's any questions you have throughout the, the, um, presentation to ask, but obviously at the end I can follow up. So, um, let's highlight our Senior Center first. So the Senior Center over this past fiscal year, um, saw over thirteen thousand visitors. Um, we have sold over eight hundred memberships this year, we have regular eight hundred members, but those scanned, so you can see the, out of those eight hundred members. They're coming frequently with the over eleven thousand scans. Um, program totals that we held, um, so over two hundred and fifty individual programs that are held throughout the year. And then of course you can see the number of the, uh, participants who we served. Uh, trips is very popular, we touched on that, um. Uh, dances were very popular years ago, day trips are the new dances, so they're very popular. We offer on average, um, two per month. In many cases, those trips have doubled the amount of people on the waitlist. So if we had endless staff, we would be planning more. So, um, just so you know, that, that, those are very, very popular, which is great, cause it draws in a lot, a lot of people into the center. Um, and then Cody touched on this, the Metro Port Meals on Wheels, this is a great partnership we have. Um, these, that's a very unique group, they serve meals the first and third Friday of every month. Um, on a regular basis, they serve over eighty lunches and they partner with a lot of volunteers. Uh, the, um, NCL, the Colleyville Chapter is, is a big, um, yeah. So that, that's a great group that comes through with us.
Can I say something?
Of course.
I don't know if you're dead, oh, you're not.
No, keep going.
No, just a funny story, so the mayor and I were shooting a video for Say the City, uh, last week, I think it was. Anyway, um, there was a shot where I'd come through the front door, entering Senior Center. We cannot get the shot because there are people coming and going. We thought we'd stop and wait and then sure enough, someone would come in, so, and we never did get the shot, we had to start from the inside. But very popular, it was, it was very impressive to see.
That's true, that's true. Uh, so some more highlights of the Senior Center, so, uh, Cody touched on the fitness program. We actually have that, the weight room there, but we also have instructor-led classes that are quite popu- popular. Our special events, we're continuing to build those, um, our last, uh, National, uh, Senior Citizen Celebration Day was, um, a sellout. Uh, and we're hoping that our, uh, annual special events continue to be those sellouts. Special interests, we have Lunch and Learns, we have a lot of pop-up classes. An idea that we've had, we would love to have a council member come through and actually, um, sit in on some of those Lunch and Learns. I know that our users love that FaceTime, it also gives you an opportunity to just have kinda an organic meetup with some of the, um, u- users and citizens of Colleyville.
Just the, uh, the information that it is and stuff, I'm sure we'll all take a turn and.
Sure, that'd be great, that, we appreciate that for sure.
Scotty's up there all the time.
Are you signing up for all of us? And then our game times, um, we have scheduled, uh, uh, instructor classes, like learn-to-play classes. But we also have a lot of groups that just come in, so if you walk into the center, you'll see the tables that are just occupied by players. So it's nice, it's wonderful. Okay, we're gonna, um, switch gears and focus on our Recreation Center. So, um, as you all know, it opened August of twenty twenty-four. This past fiscal year, uh, we have seen over seventy-seven thousand visitors. Um, memberships, those are all Colleyville residents. So I'll tell you with our Recreation Center, we, anyone thirteen or older is able to get a membership. So that is a significant number, if you consider that our memberships are only focusing on our residents. Um, and of course, those members are coming in often. Guest passes, I wanna explain what that is, we allow guests to actually come. Guest passes, I wanna explain what that is, we allow guests to actually come in only with Colleyville residents during specific programming. So to have eight hundred guests over this past year, visit with a a resident who is also a member is a significant number. So some of those programs that we have, obviously we have open play, uh pick uh the open play, we have volleyball, we have basketball. Um and and they'll come in and just, so for just.
Don't forget pickleball.
Small number. We do, we don't, we actually don't allow um non-residents to come in, right? Our non-resident guests to come in for pickleball.
So popular.
Yeah.
We're all nervous about that, but we'll.
What we first heard is I got somebody calls like, why can't my friend play this, because you're gonna have to learn a new friend in Colleyville.
That's true. And then how do people know about our programs? We have, I know that Brittany touched on this, we actually have someone in-house that has a great skillset, who designs and um executes our brochure and annually we send out thirty-one thousand brochures, so. Um it's it's a significant number of uh marketing pieces that are out there. Okay, now let's delve into specifics, so pickleball, learn-to-play for to uh participants in our pickleball programming. We have annually, we had two hundred and thirty, but on a weekly uh basis, we have players that are coming in. We offer it um six days a week, so Sunday through Friday, um and we have a significant number of players that come in. Um the outdoor courts, they're being booked, if you haven't played or if you don't see them, they're getting booked. And those rentals and bookings are funneled through the Rec Center. So our staffs, obviously, they're planning and programming and and hosting these classes, but then um they're also making sure that our customer service is there with the needs of.
I know he's a big tennis player down there and so I see him kinda gleaming a little bit with his pickleball.
Oh, and we do tennis, yeah, I promise. Uh so our adult sports, um we're always evolving, it, you know, adult programming is challenging. It is in our industry, it always has been, has been. Um we have five-on-five basketball night and then we also have adult volleyball nights and, you know, they're pretty steady. Volleyball's a little bit more popular, basketball has struggled lately, so, you know, we have some new programming that we're trying to push out in the spring to hopefully draw in some some of those players again. Um ping pong, I wanna touch on this, so we have a great partnership with our um, it's the Grapevine Table Tennis Group. I know, I'm I'm totally killing that name, uh sorry, uh Grapevine Table Tennis Club, there you go, um not not too far off. So um so the interest for learn-to-play ping pong programming is there from youth to adult. So our classes are significant, but then on average, we host it two days a week and on average, we have forty adult players. So I did add this photo, I, it's kinda hard to see, but I wanted to show, this is actually in one of our gymnasiums. So you can see we have tables that are lining both sides of the gym and players on all the tables. So it's a significant sport that has a lot of players and you don't see a lot of just open play in the area and so Colleyville does a good job with that. And then um for children's program, um homeschool programming, so our homeschool programming is um one hundred percent led by staff that are our team members and the word has gotten out, we offer a great program. So we have a lot of people who are calling, our numbers are increasing every month. Um they're there two days a week and, you know, it's, they are playing and and working out and socializing and it it's a significant program. Okay, some more information, so I, our total programs that we offered this past year excluding our summer camp, um over eight hundred and fifty. So that that's a significant number of the participants who we served in those programs. So those are our classes, obviously those um learn-to programming, um the dance classes that we offer, our fitness classes, that it's a pretty significant number. But our summer camps, we had a a great successful summer, uh because we had our own building. So we held over fif- uh fifty-two camps and then we served almost a thousand participants. So those are half-day programs, we have a handful of full-day programs as well, um and they started the day kids got out of school and they they went until kids returned to school. Um our special events, um hopefully you are are familiar with them, we um have winter ball, our our bunny brunch lunch, junior anchors and the parents' night out. Where it is special event season for us, so we're in the middle of of planning them now, so um having that number of participants um in those special events is is a lot. And then I do wanna point out our facility booking, so um Colleyville uh nonprofit groups are welcome to use our center for their, you know, their board meetings, um their volunteer meetings. And for us to have, this past year, we had um almost a hundred groups with um seventeen hundred in attendance. So um uh our space is being used, which is wonderful and we continue, we wanna continue to build that. Uh more information about some of these programs, therapeutic recreation, I do wanna point out, um that's not a lie about the contagious smiles. It is a partnership, they come in, they um they're here two days a week. Um it is a program for eighteen and older um special needs individuals, um they are socializing, they're they're exercising, they're dancing. Um we really enjoy that group, so again, it it's a third party that comes in and partners with us, but I know that it's the highlight of the week for for our staff members to see those those um individuals come through. Sand volleyball, you know, it's held out here, um it's quite popular, which is a great adult activity that we offer. Um rumor has it that the Arlington team had their first victory a few weeks ago. Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Colleyville team had their first victory, sorry. Their Colleyville um uh team had their first victory um a few weeks ago and uh that was like the top of the town at at National Night Out, which was great.
We need to pay some more refs better.
I mean, it was, it was the top, the top of the town at National Night Out. Um our youth leagues, um I will say that we, the word has gone out that we offer a solid uh program in our youth leagues. Um our basketball registration is going on right now, so this number is from two seasons last year and right now, registration for our first season is at twenty-five teams. So and that was checked a couple of days ago and that number is going up. So again, the word's gotten out that we we offer a great program, so, um and that volleyball is is always a great program. And then lastly, our fitness, so um we do offer instructor-led classes at the center. One thing I do wanna point out, um we've had an increase of um customer comment cards as well as, again, at National Night Out. I I help table, um the our table, um the Parks and Rec table and we ha- I had a a number, a greater number of individuals come in and ask about weight room, cardio pieces, you know, when when are we getting those? So um I, you know, we're, I I'm making note of all of that, I know Lisa and I have had some discussions about that. So I did ask for feedback as to where they're exercising and um I did get a lot, I I actually didn't hear anything about working out in Colleyville. There are several that are going to other recreation centers in other cities, surrounding cities. So um I know as a team, we're looking at um creative ways where we can um figure out how to meet those needs.
Our building's only so big now.
I know, I know, okay. Uh lastly, some opportunities that I wanna leave you with, so um I, we are growing, we we are always changing gears. We brainstorm on a regular basis on different opportunities that we have. So um our um the the ones that I really wanted to point out, so we are looking to combine our memberships, the Senior Center, residential Senior Center as well as our Recreation Center memberships, so that our users know fifty-plus can go back and forth. So we have a gym, we have indoor walking opportunities around the gym, we have the pickleball, you know, we have ping pong, we have fitness classes. So we're really hoping that we can cross-market with each other. Um I know we had, we were, a lot of our residents were used to using our facilities, um especially the Senior Center um and hoping that we can start pulling them down to the Recreation Center, so hopefully that will be done soon. Uh we're investigating current outdoor uh court rental processes, so when we launched the outdoor court rental processes, we um our s- s- center was staffed only Monday through Friday and so we required a three-day window in order for people to rent. So we're looking at some options to shorten that, because we're staffed seven days a week. Um and Brittany does a great job training and onboarding their staff, so, you know, if if a question or a uh submittal or an application comes in on the weekend, the part-time staff would be able to to field it and respond. Um increase our social media presence, so um many times we push out needs to um market our programs to receive registration, but we want more feel-good content. Colleyville's a beautiful city, uh we want those ambassadors out there kind of screaming at the rooftops about what a great uh department we have, so um we're gonna increase our social media presence to help with that. And then focus on programming to increase foot traffic, I know that we had a uh significant brainstorm meeting yesterday on um toddler programming, preschool programming, additional tournaments that can, we can bring in, we can partner with people and host cornhole tournaments, dodgeball tournaments and and other opportunities, so. Anyways, tho- those are our facts and figures from this past year, what questions can I answer, if any?
It's an amazing program, we're doing really well and what we have.
How long have you been here?
Um I have been here four months now.
Okay, I just wanna say, four months, my goodness, look at that, it's like.
You got a good.
Been here forever.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I I slipped up on that that city, I apologize.
No, no, that's good, that's good.
Let you slide this time.
I'll get an accent.
Six months, you gotta be honest.
Well, thank you, I appreciate your time.
I just wanna say, I'll quit, I just really, I've said it before, I just think we have the absolute best rec staff in Texas. And I think that our uh recreation senior programs are best in class. I mean, these programs are outstanding and very popular, of course, and so thank you.
It's also great to see the buzz too, like, you know, Lisa helped me get the Grapevine Colleyville Lacrosse Association doing all their meetings there and they're so welcoming, get them set up and it's so easy to use it and just having the buzz of people in there. When you go in there, it just, it's transformed so much from just being a really cool building to now it's just as much the people that are inside the building as it is the building. It's it's really, to echo what Scotty's saying, it's great to be in there.
Yep, you guys do a fantastic job, are very proud of you.
Thanks.
Thanks for representing us.
I hope ten percent. That's not a number, right, you got a ten percent.
Okay, it's me again.
You got a little, I thought you marketed this one.
It's your visible.
Just wanted to confirm. One last time.
The font's wrong.
Okay, so the Hall Johnson Tower, Colleyville in cursive and with the C V on the opposite.
Here we go, love it.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Then the other option is different font. Those are the two options for the Hall Johnson.
We we talked about.
I like this.
We talked about matching the um signage on the uh.
It's the only thing I remember about that, but I don't know. I like this one.
Just for the.
I like the cursive, because it adds cla- to me, it adds class and it's different than just a block letter and a block C V.
The cursive is classy.
It is.
It's classy.
Classic.
I love it though.
Classic.
We can't read it, the kids can't read it.
Yeah, that's true.
Where are we?
City or we have?
Can you read, can you read that tower, Grandma?
What does that say, Grandma?
Sorry, I had to do that. Reading.
Well.
I think if it goes block, then it just goes, it looks like a continuous word all the way around, because you got Colleyville C V, Colleyville C V. But to me, the difference is the cursive in there, it looks, it looks better to me.
Well, if we were trying to it and uh make the C V more prominent, because that's what's gonna be on those street signs, that that it seems like the cursive would would do that a little better. In other words, if the C V is gonna be on the street sign and get it to match the twenty-six, it would, that would seem to draw that out a little bit more.
It's gonna be C V Colleyville on the street signs, isn't it?
Yep.
Gonna have C V. Going back. And I'm not just saying it like Chris, he likes it. I like it, but.
Block letters, right.
It's a nod to the old signs, the old signage, like when Brittany and I were in school, like. Also, that's how high school, the Panthers, their new helmets have the state of Texas on them and Colleyville written like that through it.
It's all going back nostalgic.
And so that's my opinion, it has nothing to do with signs or whatever, I just like that and I like that, like the high schools embraced it on the football helmets. Um it's at the Rec Center.
So one's more nostalgic and one's easier to read, basically.
Or modern.
Well, if the Colleyville was smaller to where the C V was. We tried to.
Different.
I'm okay with the cursive.
I'm gonna go.
I'm in the middle of something.
Yep, me too.
Doesn't matter.
You side.
You pick, Lisa.
Why don't you just vote on this and be done with it? I don't even know where I'm talking. Cursive, raise your hand.
I don't care.
Okay, wa- okay. Okay, block it is.
Don't do that.
Okay, so it's cursive, yes, okay. And then I just wanted to show the.
Big time.
Cursive. That's me, cursive, yeah. Everyone's good with that one.
Yeah, that one we were clear on.
Yeah. That was good.
Okay.
That was good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cursive.
Alright, any discussion over the uh October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five council meeting? Discussion, should be pretty quick, uh whenever uh the garden club comes up and I asked everybody to come down there right now. Because they're gonna be sending something to the the council. Alright, well then I'm gonna go into executive session.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to meet you all.
Alright, we'll be moving into executive session according to the Texas government.